Good evening and welcome to the West Covina City Council meeting. We're going to go ahead and begin our meeting. We are just at 7 o'clock here. First, we will have our invocation by Pastor Mason Okubo with First Emmanuel Lutheran Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Thank you, Mary, Mayor, council members. Let's bow our heads in prayer. Father in heaven, we thank you for your many blessings which you have showered upon us. We ask you your wisdom as we seek to give guidance to this fair city of ours, West Covina. I also remember all those who will be voting today. We ask that all those who have come out to grant them wisdom as they seek to give guidance to our fair state. Father, bless our meeting today, grant us wisdom and guidance, and we ask this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join with me to the pledge to our flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Chairman Sanderson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chairman Hurford.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Hernandez. Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Tui.
Here.
Mr. City Manager reporting out from closed session.
There was no closed session, so I have nothing to report.
That's what I thought, but I said I'd call it anyway. Changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager.
We had no changes to the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to see if we could add the Water Quality Authority appointment to the agenda. We received information of who was eligible candidates after the posting of the agenda, and I'd like to add it so we could vote to appoint or vote to support one of the three candidates running.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, I know we discussed that. I thought you said it was coming in the next meeting, but I don't know if there's time restraints where we need to handle that.
It's within the council's authority to do that, and the attorney is aware of what the process is to add that on if you wish to hear that.
And my only concern was, we were the only city that did not take a resolution to support anyone at this point in time, and the candidates, these are closed now. We know which three are running.
Okay.
It's Maggie Clark from the City of Rosemead, Louis Agonyaga from the City of South Almani, and Monica Garcia from the City of Baldwin Park. And those candidates are final, which they were not last council meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, in order to add that item, the Brown Act does allow that to happen. There has to be two findings the council makes. The first finding is that this item came up before the posting of the agenda, and the second finding that has to be made is that there's a need to take immediate action on this item. The Brown Act requires the vote of four fifths of the council, and so given that four members are present, that would require unanimous vote of council members present to add that item.
Okay. Did you need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I was making a motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Now, the high-speed rail, we're going to have a presentation. Do I stay seated? Are we going to be doing that? Okay. I would like to introduce and call forward Henoveva Ariano, who will make a brief presentation for the California High Speed Rail Project. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, thank you, and may the council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to address and provide a briefing to the council on the high-speed rail system. I should actually note a correction to the agenda. It's not a light rail system. We do have Metro Gold Line, which is a light rail system here in Los Angeles County. This is quite distinct from that, and as you'll learn from the presentation, something quite unique here in the United States. Actually, the City of West Covina is in a very convenient geographic location for high-speed train transport here in California. You, several years ago, were also identified as a potential station location for the Maglev system. This is different technology from the Maglev system, but it's still a high-speed train system, which I'll walk you through. In terms of this type of technology, which is steel-wheel-on-steel rail, it travels at very high speeds, 200 miles per hour plus. It currently operates in many countries around the world excluding the United States. We do not have this here. Those are the top five countries that have current operations and additional miles under construction. So as you can see, total miles, we're into the over 10,000 total miles that are either already operating or planned for operation in these countries. The first country to implement this technology was Japan in the late 1960s. Currently, the state of California is planning a statewide system. These types of systems in other countries have worked for destinations 300 to 500 miles apart. That's when they are the most successful. Our ridership and revenue estimates are based on that point-to-point travel, so you can consider it somewhat comparable to air travel, not like a MetroLink or a light rail system. The current estimate for build-out of the first phase of the program is $43 billion, so it is a significant undertaking, and the build-out for this first phase is estimated by the year 2020, so about another 10 years from now. In terms of why a system like this is needed, first and foremost, perhaps, some would say is the jobs. It is a major infrastructure program. It certainly will help our economy in transferring skills of people moving from other types of manufacturing into this type of technology and type of system. The state of California is quite congested, particularly here in Los Angeles County, so we're needing different types of transportation for different consumers. Some of us have to use cars, some can use bus, some can use train, and others, other types of transport, or air travel. This gives us another choice to get around the state for longer distances. In addition, to rely on our cars and air travel for long-distance travel, that increases the impact on our environment. This provides another clean alternative. It is a proven technology, as I mentioned. Since the late 1960s, it's proven to be very safe and very reliable. It's 100% clean electric power, so it would operate off the electric grid, not diesel engines as we think of trains here in the United States. As I mentioned, it improves mobility and provides congestion relief, particularly for our freeways and airports, and there is the economic benefit of the jobs to our economy here. To give you an update in terms of the state, this is a map of the statewide system. Those circled segments of the state between San Francisco and down here in San Diego are the eligible sections to receive federal funding right now through the stimulus program, otherwise, in this case, known as the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. These are significant dollars into the billions that have been awarded to the State of California to begin this system in one of those four areas, either in Northern California, San Francisco, to Jose, all the way down here in Southern California, potentially LA to Anaheim. Now, to talk specifically about here in the San Gabriel Valley and for West Covina, I'd like to walk you through what we're proposing down here. The Los Angeles to San Diego section of this system is actually a Phase Two project of the entire statewide network, so we are not part of the Phase One that I just mentioned that would be receiving those federal dollars, so we are a second tier, if you will. The good part about that is it allows us time to do adequate planning and talking to all of our cities and stakeholders about what this type of transport system means for us here locally. It's 170 miles between LA and San Diego. There is a total of eight stations that would ultimately be operating between the two destinations. We cross three different Caltrans districts, cross four different counties, nearly 100 cities, and quite a number of political districts. So, as you can imagine, a lot of coordination and a lot of folks to get moving in the same direction for a system like this to even be possible, but we're at the very early stage, so we're beginning that now. These are our partners in terms of transportation agencies between LA and San Diego. The Metropolitan Planning Organization, otherwise known as SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, and the San Diego Association of Governments are critical in helping us think globally, broader than local jurisdictions, about how a system like this could work. And our transportation partners from Metro all the way down to the San Diego entities help us thinking through how transit can tie into existing transit. The guiding principles for this system, as you can imagine, we need to have some goals or parameters, if you will, to even consider a system like this, and these are our main guiding principles. To use existing transportation corridors, so that would be to not even consider going through a developed area, but to stay within freeway or rail corridors that are already serving as transportation arterials. To minimize property acquisitions, definitely both commercial and residential. The system has to be completely separated from local streets, so as opposed to MetroLink that has grade crossings, this system has to be completely dedicated and separate from local streets, so it would need to go either above or below our existing streets, or the streets or the rail would need to move in order for that to happen. We are required to achieve a travel time of an hour and 20 minutes between the two destinations, LA to San Diego. That was legislatively mandated in 2008 with Proposition 1A, which we approved on our ballot here in California. So in order for it to continue to serve as a high-speed train system and provide commuters that choice of getting to destinations quickly, this is the required travel time for our team. And also, each of the transit stations need to have intermodal connectivity, that is, connecting with local bus service and any other form of local transit. Here in the San Gabriel Valley, I'm going to show two slides that divide us between the west and the east San Gabriel Valley. This is the west San Gabriel Valley with Los Angeles Union Station there on the left side of the screen, and then on the right side of the screen is the I-605. This is the east San Gabriel Valley where the City of West Covina is located. On the left of the screen are the cities of El Monte and Baldwin Park. I-605 is there, and to the right, that white dot to the right is Ontario Airport. So within this part of the east San Gabriel Valley, we are actually looking for one station in the San Gabriel Valley to provide a stop and an opportunity for people to board the system between LA Union Station and Ontario Airport. So all of the white dots that you see, with the exception of Ontario Airport, are all candidates for the one station. The current candidates are El Monte, West Covina, Pomona, and Industry. And if we want to look at West Covina a little bit more closely, this is a graphic. The black line is the proposed high-speed train system, which would operate on the 10 freeway. We've gotten a lot of feedback from your staff, as well as the other cities, about staying within the median or the right-of-way of the freeway and not to move either north or south of the freeway for obvious reasons because of potential impacts to existing development. So the two green circles are potential station sites that may work here in the City of West Covina, and they are centered around the two Westfield shopping centers, both the Fashion Plaza and the Eastland. So that's the Fashion Plaza on the left, the Eastland on the right. These are potential locations where a station may be able to operate, may be situated, and would have that connectivity that we talked about, and also service to local business. An issue, which is the green, or excuse me, the yellow bubble there to the right, is a portal location where the system would need to go underground in order to move further east through Kellogg Hill, as the grade for a high-speed train system cannot climb that hill, so it would need to go through it. Staying still within the median but below the freeway through Kellogg Hill. So this is the general area where the system would need to go below ground, which is an issue that we would need to talk about how that type of facility would look and operate and be situated. It may impact the location at the Eastland, a station at the Eastland Center, so in terms of the City of West Covina, you can think through your options or potential impacts for both locations. This is very preliminary. I think my next slide is the, these are the criteria that we use to choose the various alternatives, and the next slide is our schedule. So what we're doing now is we're on item number two. We are currently putting together a preliminary Alternatives Analysis Report, which is not to select an alternative, but rather to choose between, to choose the alternatives that are the most feasible to carry forward. So we would like to get rid of options that don't make sense from our maps and only focus on what does make sense. Currently, the I-10 alternative is still one of the candidates that is being considered, and we would expect direction from the Board of Directors in March about the feasibility of that alternative and the potential for it to move forward. The subsequent dates are for our draft environmental document and our final, which would occur out to the year 2014 at the earliest, depending on funding. So that was a lot of information, but it's to give you an update. Your staff has been excellent in working with us about potential opportunities here in West Covina, but you as a council and the community needs to be aware that this type of system is being considered, and we'll have further opportunity for additional discourse. But again, to give you this update, that's my presentation tonight. I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Is there any questions of council? Okay. Well, thank you so much for visiting West Covina and bringing the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
At this time, we will do some certificates of recognition, and I'll come forward. Well, I'm still going to say that West Covina is baseball capital of the valley because we have so many great teams in West Covina. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Our first certificate of recognition, I'd like to call forward Mike Quinn, who is the manager of the American Little League Major Cardinals.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. I'm going to give you the honors to come over here, if you would, and call the boys' names, and we'll give them their certificates. And you can talk a little bit about the team if you'd like.
Well, this is our third time back, so most of the nucleus of the team we've had with us since they were eight. So we're honored to be here. We're honored to get the award, and I can only say that the city provides us with the greatest facility there is to teach these boys to play ball. Thank you. Alec Alvarez.
Just have him come on. Scared of him in public speaking. Ready?
Noah Ruiz. And Greg Veramontes. Coach Larry Davis.
And of course, Mike, on behalf of the citizens and the city council, we'd like to present you with this recognition. Thank you for being such a vital part of the kids' lives in our city. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for talking. I feel...
Do you have two rows?
Go.
Hold your certificate, and look it on camera. You're famous.
Give him a round of thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next certificate of recognition, city tournament minor champions in the District 19 minor tournaments. Look like they might have some neckaches going on with something hanging around their neck. I'd like to call forward Frank Vallis, the manager of the Red Sox.
Just to give you guys a little briefing of our minor Red Sox, they accomplished, they were able, one of the first teams to be able to play not only District 19, but also for the district tournament of West Covina, and these kids went 29-0 was their final record without losing any games. And the first one we have is Glenn Arnadi. Micah Angelio. Wanted to make sure I get that right. Smile. Johnny Lopez. Not here right now. Gustavo Valenzuela. You can smile. And to my great assistant coaches, Nick Hanamaikei.
And to Frank. Thank you again to the city council and everybody, every public citizen. I really appreciate it. And go West Covina baseball team. Right?
I want to say thank you to West Covina.
Well, in the wrong order, the boys, ready?
Come on, boys.
Or on your knees, if you'd like to do that.
Keep moving to the left. You're right.
You're right.
Madam Mayor, you say West Covina? I believe they're from Boston. You stand corrected.
Oh, okay. Well, then, we need the awards back. I'm sorry. Hold your certificates out, guys.
Let me see your awards. Make sure they're right side up.
And you guys can smile now.
And do not hold it in front of your face before your friends.
Friends' face.
Yeah. Picture's coming at you. Keep going, parents. You got a chance. That might have been a mistake. Yeah.
Wait, wait.
She's got three minutes. Shake it. Come on, it'll work. Keep going.
It's a poll, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Thanks, guys, for coming. I'll win some more. All right. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation for America Recycles Day. I know I've been doing that a lot lately, and my son collects the money, which isn't fair, but anyway, we would like to call forward Mr. Shannon Yahtzee, our Public Work Director, to accept the proclamation. Here we go. Do you want me to read this whole thing? No. Okay. I can just say, and do by hereby urge all citizens to do their part in helping save the environment through a continuing effort to recycle, reduce, and reuse. American Recycles Day. Would you like to say a quick, couple words?
Sure. Thank you. And we just wanted to take a minute to remind everybody to recycle. The city's doing its part. We're using recycled tires in our parks and on our trails and in our streets, and we are doing energy efficiency projects, too. So just to remind you all to keep that in mind, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Ready?
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have our oral communications. We have yellow speaker cards. If you'd like to speak on any items on the agenda, at the top of the stairs, and our, we have a five-minute speaking limit. Our first speaker is Mr. George Ogden.
Yes, sir. Do you have a chance? I'm sure you have.
Sorry. You were on the top of the pile. Call it as I see it.
My name is George Ogden, City of West Covina. Good evening, city councils, members of staff. Roger Hernandez. I'm up here right now representing both the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the memorial team, I mean, correction, the memorial committee. I just wanted to let you know that on Veterans Day, there'll be a ceremony, a groundbreaking ceremony as well, for the Veterans Memorial here in West Covina, and this will be on Thursday, November 11th, at 10:30 a.m., and we'll have the ceremony there and some recognitions. After the event, there'll be a free lunch for our veterans and their families at the VFW and any of the guests that would like to come, and most of you know where that's at, but for those that you don't, the VFW is located at 2328 West Merced here in the City of West Covina, or just real close to the freeway. I hope that everybody has the opportunity to attend, and this is one of the days that you can go out of your way to say thank you to a veteran, and I want to say thank you for all your service and for you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, George, and you are correct, and I'll look forward to the event. Thank you for what you guys are doing. We really appreciate it. Our next speaker is A. Williams.
My name is Alfred Williams, 30-year resident of 35-year residents of West Covina. Good evening to you, Mayor Sanderson, and Mr. Hurford, Mr. Tui, Mrs. Lane. I come up here tonight to kind of give you a congratulations for doing something that's better than nothing, and that's the Sires Program that you've had put on the internet, even though it's very difficult to get to and understand what it's there for, but it does provide the citizens some information. The problem is, right now, they don't know it's there, because I came up only by accident. We need to find some way to let the citizens know that this is out there. I say it's a better-than-nothing system because I'm sure these little leagueers that were up here tonight are going to be glad to listen to themselves getting a certificate. A lot of residents would be glad to listen to what Caltrans is going to, rather than seeing it. Now, if you can put audio on there, I'm sure that getting the extra of putting a video instead of having that kaleidoscope of that you got to be high on something to want to watch it, it's kind of weird, but I want to thank you for putting something there. It's better than nothing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shirley Buchanan.
I also want to say thank you for the system because I was having difficulty for probably six or seven months where I couldn't bring up the documents. Thank you. Tonight, I am asking a few questions. I don't expect answers tonight, and I do plan to put these questions in the form of a letter. I just didn't have an opportunity to do it today. But I reviewed the code amendment that is on the agenda tonight about amending the municipal code related to telecommunication facilities, and the only part of it that I really have a question on is why the item to shorten the distance from a half a mile to a quarter of a mile. I'm just curious what the rationale is on that. For me, as a layperson, I just see that as being, the city being able to grant more licensing to more wireless people. The other question I was wondering is, does the San Gabriel Valley Tribune attend our meetings? There's been very little reporting on the wireless communication issues in the newspaper, and I only ran into one neighbor after, that I went around in the neighborhood, that had seen the article about the Merced Azusa Tower for the church. Okay. Some of the questions that...
I just didn't have an opportunity to do it today. But I reviewed the code amendment that is on the agenda tonight about amending the municipal code related to telecommunication facilities, and the only part of it that I really have a question on is why the item to shorten the distance from a half a mile to a quarter of a mile. I'm just curious what the rationale is on that. For me, as a layperson, I just see that as being, the city being able to grant more licensing to more wireless people. The other question I was wondering is, does the San Gabriel Valley Tribune attend our meetings? There's been very little reporting on the wireless communication issues in the newspaper, and I only ran into one neighbor after, that I went around in the neighborhood, that had seen the article about the Merced Azusa Tower for the church. Okay. Some of the questions that my neighbors did ask, and I, as I say, I don't expect answers tonight, is how much the city land, how much city land exists for wireless towers at the present time? How many wireless companies are allowed on a tower? How much rent does the city receive from each wireless company on a tower on city-owned land? Does the city receive a residual from the private property owners that have wireless towers on their property? And would the church, had the appeal been approved, would they have shared their rent with the city? Can the city mandate that the owner of the original wireless tower provide access for additional wireless companies to use the same tower? And finally, the city should consider broadening the notification area for a hearing from 300 feet to at least 500 to 1,000 feet. The 300-foot feet may have been logical in the '50s or even up to the '70s, but we're a thriving city, and I think more residents should be notified when the wireless towers are coming into their area. The other idea that I met along my way was that the city develop a master plan, and I know that I have heard at previous City Council meetings, a couple of the people asked for a moratorium, and it does appear logical that that's about the only way that the city could develop a master plan. But I believe it is the responsibility of the council and the Planning Commission to the residents to have a plan so that the residents, by the wireless companies, so that the plans, well, anyway, that the, it isn't a surprise to the residents when they hear about it either from their neighbors or now that we have some form of communication on the Internet that they learn that way. Thank you very much, and this is a very exciting time for our country tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Louis Aganagua.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I just, actually, I was, I was just came, I thought it was on the agenda, the item for the Water Quality Authority, so I'm just going to have a seat and wait. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, this is all the speaker cards that I have at this time, so that we will move forward to our consent calendar. Actually, I have a question for the city attorney on this one item in reference to the election, the Water Basin Quality Authority. Where do we place that into the agenda?
After the last item, at the end of the agenda. And Mayor, if I may, also, the record should reflect that there's a, I've been provided a document for this item which is available to the public.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and, this consent calendar, if there's no items to be pulled.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Tuie.
Item three on the consent calendar, the one dealing with wireless communications, as my family has had a tower on their property since 1990, 91. I don't know the exact date. I have to abstain on that, but I will make a motion for all the rest and abstaining on that one.
Okay. A motion and do a second, a second on all items but item three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Motion carries for the consent calendar. Briefly, the resident that did speak had a lot of questions on the wireless towers. That'd be, I think, a good idea, staff, to have her put those questions in writing, and then you'll be able to address those one by one, because I probably have some of the answers, but not all of them, and I think that staff would be able to provide that. Because I know it would depend on each cell tower and what the agreement is, et cetera. And in reference to the Tribune, they did, they used to attend our meetings, but I have not seen them here in a while. Maybe you, you know, so I don't have an answer on that either. So Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I can respond to all the questions, but I will be able to give answers to most of the questions later on, once I do get those. But I did want to clarify that the city does not receive residual income from non-city properties. I mean, I know that answer already.
Okay. Mayor Potem Herford.
What is, it's a good question. What is the reason for the one-half mile to a quarter mile?
Mr. City Attorney, since these questions are being answered, am I okay still?
If you have declared a conflict, you should leave the room.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't know they were going to discuss it.
Now you know.
Well, I think the question was about the change from a half mile to a quarter mile. Right now, the code requires a separation between towers of a half mile. Over the last seven to eight years, we've had numerous variances approved by the Planning Commission that allowed that distance to be reduced. So the Planning Commission, looking at what their past practice and their policy and not really following that standard, decided to set a smaller standard that they would, they would more likely follow.
Can I answer your question?
To alleviate some residents' fears that that just gives a blanket policy that anything within a quarter mile can be approved, every one of these has to go through some type of a hearing, is that correct?
That's correct. They all require, all towers require a conditional use permit.
Okay. Is it, you know, in my opinion, you know, maybe the variance is a better way to go. I know that, I don't want to create fear in residents' minds that we're trying to proliferate the city with cell towers. As I said last time, I'm as frustrated with cell tower owners or the builders as the residents are, because we never know when they're coming. All of a sudden, they're just, all of a sudden brought forward, and they go through our planning process without any input from anybody up here. I don't even know who the people are, so I think, to be honest, I think I'd rather see it on a variance, so can we strike that? Do we have to bring that back again, or can we just strike it?
We had a little bit of, well, that may be a question for the city attorney, how we deal with that, but from a, from staff's position, if you want to change it back to half mile, that's not a problem at all. All we do is erase the change and leave, leave that section alone.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we do that. How, if city attorney can advise us if we need to bring it back at another meeting.
You would need to bring it back.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we change the distance back to the half a mile.
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Then we'll see that at a future meeting. Okay, we can call Mr. Tuie back in. That's why you're coming back quickly. There's candy here, that's why. Okay. We have changed our format to our agenda, so I'm having trouble. Award a bid. Award a bid for the school crossing sidewalk? Let's see. That was in our consent. Okay. Anybody have any AB 1234 conference meeting reports? No? Okay. Next item, City Council Community Development Commission requests for reports or studies investigations. We have number eight, which is Councilmember Michael Tuie. Request from Michael Tuie requesting City Council consensus to instruct staff to study the possibility of constructing the Foothill Transit Parking Structure at the Westfield Shopping Center. Mr. Tuie.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if we could work, that's where the bus lines pick up. Ninety percent of the riders in that area is between Firestone and Margarita Jones. Westfield owns the property, but we own a lot of the other property in that area where we can possibly work with Westfield. Anyway, all the parking structures that are currently at Westfield are owned by the city of West Covina, so I thought, why don't we build a parking structure where the bus riders are, so they don't have to park over by Elephant Bar and walk to Margarita Jones? Be simpler to have them park right next to their bus stop.
Okay.
And I wanted to see if we could bring this back.
I'll, if that's a motion, I'll second it. Yeah, because I know I had discussed this similar, this item with this manager a while ago.
And along this line also, to have Foothill work on, if any of you travel over there, the bus is right in front of the post office, block the traffic lane.
Yeah.
We're work, I want to work with Foothill to have them turn in bus inlets, so the buses are outside the traffic lane while they're loading, so they'll make the traffic actually flow around them all instead of blocking all the traffic, and I think it will be safer and better for everyone involved in, to have that going concurrently while we're looking at this.
Okay, great. A motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, Mayor Potem Herford.
I don't have a problem with a brief report, but until Foothill and Westfield give us some input that they're even interested in this, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it. We've, we brought back parking structures numerous times, and either the, were too expensive, the traffic was an issue, I mean, there's a lot of things that come into play, and I'm real concerned about spending city money on a parking structure when Foothill Transit was just, they actually had a parking structure, had they been willing to spend another million dollars to build a walkway across the street, so I don't mind bringing the report back, but I don't want to spend a whole lot of time.
Councilmember Tuie.
I just want to make sure I emphasize that besides this initial work, and I do agree it does probably cost something, that I'm not saying the city to pay anything to build it, to get it entitled and to allow it to build. My concern is having a parking structure built somewhere where it's used from in the morning to 5 o'clock, then it sits vacant. If it's at the mall hooked on to our mall parking structure, it has the ability to have use after hours, instead of having a giant white elephant and being the area where I was talking about, since it is wider, you can build a wider footprint and a longer one. It's also way more economical to build it there based on the footprint that we have. We can add, only build a three-story parking structure there, actually two stories above the ground level, instead of a six-story where they were proposing it, so. And I understand, and I agree with Councilman Herford, I don't want to expend a lot of city dollars. The object is to get Foothill and everyone in Westfield at the table, so we can talk about it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay. Then this is where we will add our item nine, I will call, because that was eight, in election of the San Gabriel Valley Basin Water Quality Authority Board Member and Alternate Member Representing Cities Without Water Pumping Rights. It's recommended City Council adopt a resolution. Mr. Councilmember Tuie, did you have a brief comment on that item?
Yes, I am currently the board alternate on there. I am not running for reelection for this position, and we've only had, we've had other people email us. We've only had one elected official come down the last two meetings to speak on their position on this, to potentially be elected to it, so I would like to make a motion to support Mayor Louis Agonyaga from the city of South Almani to do a resolution in support of him.
Okay.
Second.
I'll have a motion and a second. Do we need to elect an alternate, or does that?
No, it's all based upon the votes.
Okay, okay. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Nice to see you. And if anybody does have any adjournments or any comments?
Oh, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The next meeting is typically the reorganization meeting, and I'm going to be out of town. I would like to request that that item be held over to the first meeting in December, if that's okay.
That's fine. Do we, Mr. City Attorney, do we need a motion to do that, or?
Could be done administratively.
Okay. All right.
Then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn in memory of Dr. Norman Snyder, a former mayor of the city of West Covina, who passed away this past week.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion. We adjourned.